We started to, but.
Tim West wanted one front heater on, you remember that?
Pretty nice, wasn't it? I told Jeff and Brian this morning, we need the air.
You hear? He said he requested air be turned back on now.
That's what they're talking about.
Well. It's time when you're ready. I assume.
She might come in later.
Morning, thank you for being here. If your stand will be led in a word of prayer by Commissioner LaPrada. Remains remain standing for our pledge.
Lord, on behalf of myself, this court, these great citizens here today, I'd just like to say thank you. Do you stand with prayer? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Called a order of the regular meeting of the Van Zant County Commissioners Court on Wednesday, January the nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, at nine oh two AM. All members of the court. Twenty twenty-two, nine oh two AM. All members of the court present, so we do have a quorum established. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the meetings for of the Commissioners Court and approval, same for December the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, and January fifth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make the motion, we table that till next period.
As y'all know, my office has been in and out, we've been short, so I've not had time to finish the minutes.
Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Pearson to pay a lot of them too. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment is submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner West.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any question or discussion about the bills that's been submitted for payment?
Did we get that one bill? Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, approving the county bills for payment, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner Milton, second by Commissioner LaPrada, any questions or discussion? Being none, all the, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, general business, is there any general business we need to be made aware of? Any announcements, anyone have any announcements or anything? Now's your time. The. Any announcements up here?
Nothing coming up.
Nothing, nothing, okay. Okay, no general business, we'll move to item number six, public comments. Anybody sign up for public comments? Joe, did you, anyone sign up for you for public comments? Anybody sign up for public comments? Okay, sure. Okay. No public comments, we'll move to item number seven, discuss and consider request for two thousand dollar donation to Van Zant County Master Gardeners Club for the purchase of plant shrubs and materials for landscape use on the grounds of the Van Zant County Courthouse and District Attorney's Office. Good morning, Joe. You may address the court.
Yes, sir, I've got some help.
Reinforcements.
Judge, I know you know Fisher Melton, Pearson, West. Fisher Pratt, little newer, when I came here in two thousand seventeen, sort of looking, I was trying to help them do a security job. Things up here around the grounds and buildings. Talked to Tommy, he talked to the master gardener program about this work here taking on part of grounds. They recommended on the programs that have, it's a small program, again, it's all volunteer based. They just didn't have the ability to do it. They were nice, they took together a book, and we, y'all, look at this, just recommendations they had from courthouse here, some things, some things we've already gotten done, just additional things we could do, all I'm trying to do is get these grounds a little bit better than they do, and trying to get as much help as we can input as we could. The master garden program, I'll let Tommy speak for just a second, it's a volunteer program, see if Texas needs extension service.
Absolutely, so we are starting our, our class right now, in fact, Becky, now, this is Becky Hett, Becky is our master gardener president. So our class that we just started last week, every, every, every even year when we do a class, we take on a class project, whether it's pending around the facility, around our office, the Blackwell House, we have Polina Garden, Community Garden. This year, we've got the, the grounds here at the courthouse that we want to kind of spruce up for y'all, and then do some sprucing up at the DA's office. Again, we've been around since twenty thirteen here in the county. We're about thirty-five members. We've got nine in this class that are just eager to get going. So I think they'll do a really good job, what we're wanting to do is to kind of do something similar to what we've done at our office, that'll be easily maintained, but showing, and it really got them to really kind of spruce up the courthouse for, for everybody to see. But low maintenance is definitely what we're going for.
Yes, I should also take on the DA's office, so what we're looking at is doing courthouse, the four corners here, correct?
Correct.
There's six planter boxes, two on the east side, two on the north, and two on the west, they're going to take on the planter boxes, and then the entrance here to DA's office, I want to re-stand dugout, which was a chores, it took me a while. I got them out, so we're going to do the front, the entryway into the DA's office over there. When I drafted this up to the request to have it put on the future agenda, I used to ask for donation, I guess since the council by the judge and Sandy donations not allowed. If we have, if we went outside and contracted this landscape, it's, it'd be expensive, but what they're going to do. I asked him, what do you need, they approached me about money, what do you need? That's two thousand dollars. Can't do a donation, can you, can't? Let me read justice a little bit. Would they be willing to cover up to two thousand dollars in expenses? This is for shrubs, plants, potting soil. There's no labor involved in this, it's a volunteer program, it's the A and N extension service. The money's going to be spent here locally, and I think it would be a.
And one thing I want to reiterate with, with me leaving, though, Melissa will still be here and kind of be a support system for them, if they need some assistance, she'll still be here.
Yeah, what he's going to address, and I didn't know you was going to show up today. As y'all know, what he just referred to, Tommy will be leaving us at the end of the month. Took a position in Kaufman County. Met with me, I guess, week ago. Look, week, ten days ago, done a great job, thank you, Tommy, for your service to Van Zant County and, and the leadership that you've provided for me.
And I appreciate all the support that the court has given me in my, over my career.
Yeah, and everything, but we did, Sandy looked into this, Sandy, you want to address it? I know she don't want to address it, but Sandy, would you address it?
I'm always bad person.
Yeah.
When I say that on the June, I ask that it can happen, the statute, a lot of government statutes always addresses the court accepting collections, not that it's that county giving collections. So I do not, I need to say we cannot. So I'm back in that league, we desire legal department that takes association counties that we may approach. It does not have a statute, but our constitutional, they have a mission to work, is to ensure that the money that our public programs. When we just need over two thousand dollars, we, we don't know what you're going to do. Dollars are going to come in, but we don't have anything in our records to show citizens if they want to come and say, you know, how is that two thousand dollar spend? We have no, we have no backup in our purchasing process there. So. So that we don't have the amount in the meeting room. My recommendation to the court was, in order to be compliant with our county purchasing, which we purchase, we have to ensure that vendors are not, that they are, they are actual vendors, they're not the bar, you know, that they don't, they are legal vendors to do this, and that means we're accountable. So my recommendation was that we purchase the plants, the materials, we go through our purchasing, so that when someone, if a citizen turns forth, we can produce invoices where we actually purchased with, so we can. And then, there will come a page to deal with it. I think there's a cleaner way and a better, more transparent way of saying we can count it.
Does that work for y'all, Tommy?
We probably need to get, say, who our vendors, our vendors are.
We couldn't contract with y'all?
Yes, sir, what I'd offer too is to them, I'm got to agree with the purchase process. We've checked ahead of time, see what stuff we want to do business with, give me the vendor's information, we're running through Sandy, if we're not set up this, then we'll set them up as soon as to make sure their taxes are paid up, and then we can do business that way.
I just want to ask the question because in our other projects, they have to see the invoices to be, and I have full proof. With that, not any. These are for you to trust us.
Are you saying to repay the master gardeners?
Well, having them told us, but we have invoices that they have to get the board, the board, so we can, if we can supply you all the invoices you need, we don't, we're out and saying, hey, we're not, we're not going to break it, and we do have those, have the, it's a break.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine, I'll just tell you, we'll sit down.
We're going to get that one we want to do, it's going to differ.
Okay.
Our court may, our court may have seen you. Yeah, that's what we're here for.
I did also tell you that, you know, we're going to need to go with the budget amendment, because the norm line is supply budget, one that Joe has right now, has seven hundred fifty dollars there, so.
Just in, I make requests for. Just if corporate gives in.
I need to know how much.
Okay, okay. Anything else?
No, sir, I believe that covered our question.
Y'all have any questions for?
Thank you, thank y'all for going, and, and please don't take it wrong. And, and county government, a, a common chance will not be covered.
And I do think you, you guys have done a great job over around that area, I think that's some of the thought process, man, look what they did over there. If they could do that over there.
I found pictures when I was packing up today, what the office looked like before we put all the, and I was like, whoa.
Yeah, it's come along, I mean, they've done a marvelous job over there. And, and I think that's what kind of Joe was looking at here for the four corners, you know, not a, not a lot, but just the four corners here, and, but.
Is it possible to get it riding, the drive and leave us?
Oh, it's possible, you got the money, yeah. Is there, so, it can do it, we, we can do it, we would just have to have invoices and buy the shrubs and stuff, and, and set them up as vendors, whoever you're buying them from, and, and everything. Is, is there, is there any entertainment of increase in the line item in the lawn and maintenance? Two thousand dollars.
Don't we have to have the budget amendment before we can vote on it?
Well, I think, I think, yeah, you would.
You'll have to get that the next.
Certainly, yeah. What do you have?
We had to have an amnesty letter.
Yeah, you're right. Okay. Okay.
I can make a request for it.
We'll put it on the budget amendment next time, now, now we're all on the same page. We might can budget amendment, and, I mean, I can't say we're all.
If we could waver that, I don't think we can waver.
No, I was wondering if you could approve and then come back and do the budget amendment before any money was.
But he's got seven fifty to get started on, yeah, he needs to come back.
You're right. Yeah, bring it back, Joe, as a budget, as a budget amendment. And, Melissa, thank you for what you do, thank you for hanging with us, not jumping shield. No.
One time, no, I'm here, and I'm, I'm not that open later, but, you know, I understand why, I do want y'all to know that our office is still the same as well.
But you guys do a great job, and my, my concern when I sit down with Tommy, it's not anything we did, or not anything we didn't do. And he assured me it wasn't, we've always had a great working relationship with the extension and four H and everything, and the master gardeners, all the committees and everything, we've had a good deal, and good luck to you, Tommy. If you ever need anything from Van Zant County, we're here.
I'm sure, and we know it's common.
Thank y'all.
Becky says she knows where I live.
And he's not moving.
That's right. Thank y'all.
Thank you, you bet. So be no action on item number seven. We'll move to item number eight, discuss and consider proposal from net data for extraction of sheriff's office data from the old server and authorize a signing the agreement. Scott, you want to address the court?
Yes, sir, we got this quote from that data for eighty-one hundred dollars to pull all the old sheriff's office information from the old server to prepare it to hand over to Southern Software for them to do and import into the new server. To catch them up to date to where Justice Solutions took over.
You may need a magnifying glass, see that right in there.
I never could see it.
It's in there, it's on item number one point, one point two. Second, one point, one point two. You see it?
I, yeah, I see a blur.
What it says is for a, a, a cost of four hundred and fifty dollars an hour, maximum eighty-one hundred dollars.
Yes.
Is that coming out of your budget, Scott?
Yes.
Are you covered with it?
That's something we're going to have to add. That's another budget.
How, how much more, I mean, it seems like every time we come, there's more and more cost to this conversion.
Well, and the good news is, so far, it looks like Justice Solutions isn't going to charge us to pull the data, we've already got them scheduled for the twenty-first to begin their pull, but they're not going to charge us for it. We don't know how much Southern Software is going to charge us for the import, I'm still waiting to get those numbers back, I think they want to look at the data first before they come into a number. Which has been something they've worked with us on the past, in the past, they didn't want to give us a hard number until they saw what it's going to be.
What did we just? The deal between them and the DA. Sheriff's Office and the DA.
That's right.
We, have we done that?
That's been completed.
Okay, and that was a cost.
I believe, isn't there a budget amendment in there for the second part of that? There were two halves of it, one we had to pay LGS, and one we had to pay Southern Software. And I think the budget limit that's in there is for the LGS portion. We paid a forty-two hundred already on one half of it, and this is one part of it, this is the, the second part. That's not related.
And there might be a third part.
I don't, not a third part to that. To that integration, no, that part is, is done, and.
But on this here.
If that's working correctly.
Yes, sir.
So.
Okay. We've got that fixed, now we're pulling track data.
This is to get the old stuff over, the data conversion onto the, onto the server, because there's nothing on the server right now that goes back before Southern Software took over. We're still accessing Justice Solutions, not Justice Solutions, yes, we're still accessing Justice Solutions. We're still paying for it every month.
Absolutely.
So we need to get all that data off and moved over onto the new server so we can cancel that.
And so we're looking at maximum here, eighty-one hundred.
Eighty-one hundred for that day to pull their part.
And then we're going to have to negotiate with the other company.
I got to find out how much it's going to be for them to bring it in. But since we're their current customer, I'm hoping they'll work with us a little bit on that, but they won't commit to a number.
That's scary. And there's some kind of cost you're going to cut when it's all done?
We're going to cut the recurring cost to Justice Solutions, which is. Like, roughly four hundred a month or something like that.
How much? Twenty-four months?
About twenty-four hundred.
And just gets that data off that old server of that data, isn't it, on to the new.
Yeah, and it puts it where it's going to be accessible for Ms. Curry's office, she was talking about, she needed that, those records to go back so many years and everything on the rest of it.
How far will it go back and pick up?
To when we started with that data, which goes back to the nineties.
So you've gone over this contract, Scott?
And they've got a lot of legal things in there, telling us not their fault if anything goes wrong, and stuff like that. I don't see what else we can do about it.
You recommend it?
I recommend it.
Okay.
It's what we have to do.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner LaPrada, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, got a second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion?
I've got a question.
Okay.
We don't have the money in there, right?
Correct.
So we're going to have to budget a minute, can we go ahead and approve this, like we couldn't do the last one?
You have a budget amendment in the book today for this?
No. I know it's going, I can't, I mean, I have the money, we just, you know, we need to put it back in.
You have the money not in that line item?
I, I can cover it now, it takes away from something in the future, but, and then if we're going to put it back next week, next time, it'll be okay.
You got the money in the line.
Yeah, we can go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We'll do the budget amendment next time.
Okay. Have a motion to second. Any other discussion or questions? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, discuss and consider installing Van Zant County Van Zant Fire Dispatch Repeater on courthouse tower. Mr. LaPrada, you want to address court on that?
Yes, sir, the fire dispatch repeater actually belongs to the county as part of the dispatch system. It's currently installed in Canton's water tower on two forty-three over by the school. Well, they're preparing to raise that tower, and so we've got to get our equipment off of it for them to do that. I'm recommending that we move it over to the court for the tower on top of the courthouse, I've done job with CIP and worked on it, there's going to be no interference or anything in the internet operations here at the courthouse. We also have the money in the sheriff's budget to pay for the, to move it over and to get the temporary license, have it over here. I just need approval to go ahead and move over to courthouse tower.
How much is it going to cost?
It's going to cost two thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars to make the move. I've done spoke with Steve, and he has it in his budget to cover it under his radio repairs and operations.
Who's going to do the work?
CIP is going to actually move it, and David English is going to supervise the repeater being moved and connected, but CIP will be putting up the antenna and coax.
That's what I was going to say.
You see your problem, Scott?
Not with the movement, CIP is going to use their, their people and their equipment under David's supervision. The tower's been reinforced by CIP, so it should handle.
I'll make a motion that we move the fire dispatch repeater to the courthouse.
Second. Okay, got a motion by Commissioner LaPrada, second by Commissioner Milton, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and consider allowing South Van Zant Fire Department to install repeater on courthouse tower. Mr. LaPrada?
Yes, sir, I have Mr. Chief Barrett here with South Van Zant Fire Department. They're in the same boat we are, and they've got their repeater on the same water tower that they run their, their operations off of. And they've asked to come over here, so I've asked Mr. Barrett to come present.
Okay.
Greg Barrett is out there for it, it's a, just a temporary while they're raising the water tower, we, we discussed a couple of things, and this is the best option for us. The only thing, we're going to have to purchase this aside now, and and I think that's, CIP is going to move it over for us, we discussed with them, and everything seems to be good, but it's, but David English is approval.
Okay.
And any expenses related to moving there, South Van Zant Fire Department will.
Okay, and you say temporary, because it'll go back?
It's going to go back.
Soon as I get the tower raised?
And we, we, you know, we have to apply for a temporary license, but that was going to wait for that, we get, if we got prison.
Okay, okay.
But all, all the expenses for our repeater will be on South Van Zant.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve, allow them to temporarily use that power during this process.
Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner LaPrada, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion?
I do, chief, how, how long is this temporary?
I've got anywhere three to six months, so I'm saying eight.
I would guess a year.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
They've got some pretty good plans, and they seem like it's going to be pretty quick.
Right.
They're just going to release the boulder, and they have a machine to raise it up, they build underneath, so, good job. My, my question was, why can't we just head it out with the paint, if they didn't want to do that?
Any other questions or discussion?
I'm pretty sure to do it all like we're supposed to, we'll need an interloper agreement. Chad might want to redo it, get your motion to improve an interloper agreement and authorize county judges sign.
We need one, we can.
I think technically we're supposed to have one.
Okay. You modify your motion.
If we need it, I'll modify to this.
Okay.
I don't think you go into any agreement with another entity without a local agreement. By, by statute.
Yeah. Okay. That's your motion, your second. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Item number eleven, discuss and consider any entering into contract with Trot Communications Group regarding radio broadband project for the American Rescue Plan funding. Mr. LaPrad, you got that?
We're going to table that. Uh, Mr. Trot just sent over a generic, and so we haven't got all the details in it. We need to approve a contract.
Okay, is that a motion to table?
Yes, sir.
Got a motion to table item number eleven.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We did table item number eleven. Item number twelve, discuss and consider modifying purchase order requirements of county purchasing policy. I don't even know who put it on there.
I put that on there, uh. Talking with JP, one of Sandy, the way prices have got with the hundred dollar minimum that they can spend before PO, it's hard orders, basic supplies. And so I was wanting to see if we could increase that to either a hundred fifty or two hundred before they need a PO for the other offices. Currently, way it's set up, road range is a five hundred dollar limit for PO, law for this five hundred, and all other offices has one hundred. I was gonna see if we could raise it to a hundred fifty or two hundred, just to prevent having to constantly create POs, just to do basic operations.
Has there been a problem? So has there been a problem?
Uh, I, the only person that I was saying, you know, from Detroit, I know him last week. He was requesting we raise the amount to two fifty because he ordered some paper for his office that exceeded a hundred dollars.
I don't think you're going, I was up there, hadn't got a letter from your office.
The, the office, the office that has voiced and signed to my office.
Yeah.
Uh, but I hope the court will remember that, uh, PO is the way for me to manage it. If you get that PO up there too high, it kind of loses control.
What would be a.
We, we just raised that here last year.
Not for them.
For, yeah, we raised it from fifty to a hundred.
I'm not sure how long that's been.
Yeah.
I, I've had concern about it, but the way that the auditor's office works for me on emergency POs, it's not a big deal. If I have an emergency that goes over, I just write emergency on it. I, I was concerned, but just, I can't only get anything for a hundred bucks, but. I'll just write a hundred, or write emergency and explain the emergency to the auditor's office.
Yeah, let me show you when you get the letter.
No, I, if, if I do it prior to the letter, as soon as it comes in, and, and I show them what the emergency was, I usually won't get a letter.
Yeah, you need a copy of it?
The letter? I've got a lot of them.
You have an extra one? Most of them have my label. So I don't, I mean, I don't, I just don't. But if you have elected official go a hundred and fifty-five, we're gonna be sitting in the same boat. Well, we really need to increase it because I don't have a problem.
Just ask for an emergency, uh, like Scott suggested, then it'd be.
Well, I don't think the JP was an emergency. I think he, they, it was office supplies that just went over the limit and.
And you know, normally, uh, able land is good about contacting the, the electrician, saying, you know, it's an accident order without. Uh, yeah, I'm not sure why that didn't happen.
Okay. So is that a motion, Chad?
Yes, sir.
What, what is?
Uh, Sandy, what would be a good number that would still keep it in control? I believe we need control. Then I make a motion to raise it to a hundred and fifty.
Okay, that's a motion by Commissioner LaPrad. Is there a second? Second call for a second?
A second.
Okay. Got a second by Commissioner Pearson. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Okay. So we got a tie. Okay. It's gonna be okay. Remain calm. Sheriff? Okay, we do have a tie. We got two, uh, you, Susan, did you get the who, the two, who voted for and who voted against?
I've got, yes, I've got Chad voted for, Keith voted for.
Yes.
Virgil voted again and to us.
Right. And I'm voting against. Leaving it a hundred. Okay. Item number twelve, discuss and consider modifying purchase. Well, that's what we just did. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider interlocal agreement between East Texas Council of Government, Van Zant County concerning precinct three cleanup day. Uh, Mr. Pearson?
Yes, sir. The, I brought all y'all the, the stuff and we were awarded the grant uh, for the three thousand dollar cleanup day. But as I spoke earlier, any, any thing you do with another entity, you have to have an interlokal agreement. So I make a motion that we enter into this interlocal agreement and authorize county judge to sign.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider contract with the, between the Human Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake in Van Zant County for Animal Shelter Services. Uh, thank you, worked on that, Virgil?
Uh, yes, Judge Commissioners, with authority of the court, uh, I've renegotiated our contract with the animal shelter. Uh, and it's, uh, same fee, six hundred and fifty dollars for a, per month will be assessed the county with a maximum of ten animals per month. And that's, uh, we can, uh, have additional animals, uh, ten animals, but we need to contact the shelter, notify the shelter before we do that for approval. The best thing that's happened out of this is, uh, uh, the shelter has agreed to, uh, allow citizens to take up to ten to, to bring in animals, uh, ten animals per month brought in by any citizens of Van Zant County for a fee of forty dollars per animal. And that's the big change in this. The citizens are allowed to take animals to the shelter now for forty dollars per animal and also, uh, there is room for additional animals, animals brought in by the citizens of Van Zant County and, and they'll be uh, assessed at a current rate of, uh, fifty dollars if they bring more than ten animals per month. So now we, we, I think we've got a better agreement with the Cedar Creek Animal Shelter and I, I make a motion that we, we approve the contract.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner LaPrad. Any questions or discussion?
The, the, what do we pay now?
Six hundred and fifty, yes.
Same price.
Same price. All difference is now individuals can take animals over there. Before it had to be a county employee that took them.
That's right.
Thank you. Uh, if somebody loads, somebody takes our ten, is that not gonna knock?
No, that's a separate deal.
Yeah, separate deal. Thank you.
That was my question. Goodness, citizen pack of eighteen sponsors. And, and we wouldn't be allowed. And, uh. Okay. So we paid this six fifty.
Mm-hmm.
And that gives us ten.
Ten animals.
And that's not the citizens.
That's the sheriff.
That, okay.
Or Van Zant County, uh, official.
Okay, and then the citizens can carry animals over at forty dollars a.
Uh, a, 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 a ten animals and then if they need to bring, if we run out of the ten animals, then we have an additional animals brought in by citizens at a rate of fifty dollars.
And, and the, the reason we're, we're, there's a little more room over there now, uh, because uh, Cawtham County is almost completed with their first animal shelter, Cawtham County Animal Shelter. So we're, that's where Cawtham County, uh, brings their animals at this time. So once that, once that's completely built, then, then we'll have more room, uh, Van Zant County have more room, if we need more.
No, sheriff did. You.
Never taken them over. They've had our.
Right.
But if you, if in case of emergency, if you had a dog bite, you know, somebody, you'd have to take custody of the, the animal. Yes, yes.
And once Cawtham County gets in, they'd be against each other. Again, okay. Did I get a, Susan, I get a motion? I made a motion. It's second by Commissioner LaPrad. Any other question, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider termination of lease agreement between Van Zant County and the Old Cotton Gin Museum Corporation on property located at two oh six South Main Street, Grantsline, Texas. I think you was looking into that, Mr. LaPrad?
Yes, gentlemen. As y'all know, the, the cotton gin unfortunately was destroyed by fire a few years back. And since then, nothing's been done with the lot. I contacted Mr. Martin, who come in before and, and done the original contract, and he said that he wants nothing else to do with it. We can take it back in. So I'm just going through the formality process of us making a motion to terminate the lease and take the property back in. It, it's right there attached to my barn, y'all know, and I just extend the fence around.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Got a motion, got a motion by Commissioner Brad, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider precinct two road and bridge entering items into Renee Bates online auction.
Uh, yes, sir. This is, uh, this is my auction items. Um, want to auction off a nineteen eighty-five Chevrolet one ton pickup a nineteen ninety-three GMC utility service truck, a nineteen ninety-four Chevrolet crew cab, a nineteen eighty-five, uh, wrecker. It's still army wrecker that we got. Just never has worked. Uh, a nineteen seventy-nine Case crawler loader and a nineteen eighty-one International Truck. Make a motion that, uh, rent, uh, the, uh, option of these items.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton. There a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion?
Uh, Virgil? Yeah, that, uh, stuff that precinct one and precinct three has in there, uh, we're just about ready for pictures. And they're gonna come and we can postpone it if you're not ready, but if we get all these items on one site, we'll all come out better uh, instead of having three Van Zant County sales. So, uh, I've just about got a piece of equipment running that's going in it, so I, I, uh, and I'm, I'm in contact with Renee Bates, come out and take a picture. So, uh, probably end of this week or next week for sure, we'll be taking the pictures if you want, if, uh, if you want to put it in, I'll say Chad and I are putting ours in the same one.
But three of my, three of these items are not. So I'm, I mean, I can't move them unless.
Yes, but they still take pictures of them and put them on there. They'll, they'll, they'll come take pictures.
Okay, yeah, if you'll let me know.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favors of placing those precinct two road and bridge items in Renee Bates' online auction. Say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider replat of lot nine in Forest Springs Estates in precinct two.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is, uh, this is out of my precinct. This, uh, Forest Springs is one of the first subdivision that was created in Van Zant County back in the sixties, early sixties. When they did, they, they built county roads around it. Twenty-three oh, uh, twenty-five oh two and twenty-five oh one, but, uh, this, uh, the regals who, who's lived out there, uh, from conception of these, uh, these, uh, flat, big subdivision, uh, they want to divide their place up into, uh, another lot to sell it. Uh, I'm not too sure who they want to sell it to. They had mentioned some of their relatives, but I don't know that for sure. But, uh, uh, and I appreciate Commissioner Pearson bringing to my attention this morning that you have to, they have to send out letters to the adjacent landowners and, and then if not, we have to post that on the internet. But this, this particular subdivision had been divided and chopped up so much under old subdivision rules, regulations that we've had till I'm gonna ask the court, uh, for a waiver, uh, of that. A waiver of. Yeah, make it the letter.
And go ahead and approve.
Go ahead. That would be my, my.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Melton makes a motion to waive the requirement of sending the letters and approve the replat of lot nine in the Forest Springs estate. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion?
Well, I just want, I appreciate Commissioner Pearson coming.
Well, and, and, and I, and I'm all for the replat. I'm not sure legally we can do that. It's, uh, these are state statutes that require on the, on a replat that, uh, if, if the I, I'm, I'm, I, I don't, I'm not against the replat, but I just, I think we're bound legally to do it the proper way. I just don't know if we're gonna get in trouble.
When this subdivision was created, those, those regulations weren't in place. I mean, if you look at it, you know, you, it's gonna, does it go?
Well, what I'm saying, it's a, it's not a, it's, it's not in our subdivision guidelines on replat because we want it. It's in there because it's state law, but if you're in a subdivision and you, and you change that subdivision, you've got to notify people, uh, anyway.
Anyway, and I see what you're saying, but, but when this was created, the state law didn't, there wasn't no state laws back then that, that mentioned replats. Those state laws were created later on, uh, in the, in the seventies and eighties is when the statue was actually created. I mean, uh, those, the state laws have been updated too.
Virgil, well, what good, would it, uh, would it be a real imposition if we had to put this off till next time and check the Allison and see?
No, it would not. And I'm, I'm all for that. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Well, and, and, and not only that, just in case, uh, I, I would recommend that we, if we do have to hear the, uh, uh, replat, let's set our date so that thirty day clock starts ticking and we don't have to put the regals off any longer.
Yeah. But. We should be able to fit by the next time.
That's right.
We should be able to, to, uh, figure this out.
That's, I, I. And, and, and I'm for sure go with that. If, if legal, if legal says go for it, let's do it. I want to help the regals.
And we got plenty of other subdivisions in the same subdivision that will give us kind of direction where we go.
Yeah.
That's now me. I will, uh, ma- make a motion, re- recall my motion, make a motion table.
Okay. Okay. So a motion, so recalled motion, Tim recalled second. Your motion is table item number seventeen. Okay. Is it, do you second that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, a motion is second to table. Item number seventeen, any questions or discussion? I was gonna throw Tom down to us and say, I heard my legal advice, but, uh, the, uh, all in favor of tabling item seventeen, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eighteen, discuss and approve Texas County lateral road and bridges. Item number eighteen, discuss and approve Texas County Lateral Road and Bridge Expenditure uh, yearly report for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Miss Hill, you may address the court.
Morning, Judge, morning, commissioners. Um, this is just the Texas Lateral Road and Bridge Expenditure Report that we file annually. Uh, I supplied you with all of the expenditure reports from the four road bridge departments, and then when we file this report, this generates how much revenue you get from the State Controller's Office for the lateral road report. Uh, just for transparency, the you spent for maintenance on all four, three billion, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars on other road expenditures, which are always salaries, fuel, road bridge repair, you know, the repair on your equipment. Any purchases of new equipment was three million, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven. So the total expenditures for Road and Bridge for F Y. Twenty twenty-one was seven million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. I'd file this report with the Controller.
Any questions for Sandy? Is there a motion to approve the report? Someone appears, you got a motion with Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPrad. Got a motion second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item nineteen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget amendments. You have the budget amendments before you? Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second by Commissioner Melton? Any questions or discussion about any of the budget amendments? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty, discuss and consider approval of December twenty twenty-one uh, financial and investment report of county treasurer to be entered into minutes of commissioners' court. So we've got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussions? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-one, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government and approval of entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, you have any comment?
Uh, we got all but two. One I didn't expect to get, which was constable one. Uh, since there's no one there to do it, and, uh, the other one was our district attorney did not get that one. Everything else is.
Is that a motion to approve the monthly report?
It is.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any question or discussion on the report submitted?
Well, you might notice that they're not due till the end of month.
And there's a couple extra in there. Uh, uh, I think they do racial profiling. We we had some reports put in there. I know, uh, uh, Heath Burton put a report in there. I know investigator from the D A.'s office put one in. And, uh, so good group of reports.
And we've got roughly twenty-one reports now that we're getting, but.
He might notice five years ago, we weren't getting any.
Weren't getting any, but if it makes you feel any better, I have some some minutes of commissioners' meetings back in the nineties, though I know nineteen nineteen oh six, and they were having the same issues then.
Okay, all in favor of approving the reports, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, item number twenty-two, we will enter into a closed executive session. We will, as soon as the executive session's over, we will reconvene to open session to take any, uh, take action on anything that comes out of the executive session. At this time, I would ask Ms. Curry to stay, uh, Lance Lins. Uh, is there anybody else we need? I think that's, I think that's it.